Well, the regular bill is for me to order on the record. It's Tuesday, December first, 2020, nine o'clock as it's eight thirty-three P. M. Before we continue, I'd like to discuss this meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation in Public Act one oh one dash zero six four zero, which amends requirements of being back due to the nineteen pandemic. All the board members are present? Affirmative?
Affirmative.
Affirmative.
Yes.
Affirmative.
Affirmative.
Thank you. For all items with public comment, after the members have spoken, I will afford public comments. Once the chair and myself have have a list of all public comments, I will call on each person present at the meeting and afford them six minutes for their comments. The public was provided the opportunity to submit a request until noon today to the email by email to the clerk's office or by placing the written request in the drop box of the village hall, participate publicly via live telephone call at the opening portion of the meeting. And the public was provided the opportunity to submit written comments until noon today by email to the public comments to the clerk's office or by placing the written comment in the drop box of the village hall. Written comments will not be read aloud. And finally, each vote taken this evening, we conduct the interroll call over. At this time, we begin by the plating allegiance. Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you very much. Clerk, please.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Brady.
Here.
Trustee Brennan.
Here.
Trustee Galante.
Here.
Trustee Glatz.
Present.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
President Vandenberg.
Clerk, thank you. Item number one, at this time, I'd ask for motion to consider approval of the agenda to second motion.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk?
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item number two, at this time, I'd ask the board for motion to consider approval of the management of the special village for me that was held on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor. Trustee Berg is an I. Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item number three, at this time, I'd ask the board to consider a motion to second agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, can you read these items into the record, please?
Item A, consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty dash R dash one twenty, authorizing a cable television franchise agreement by and between the Village of Tinley Park, Illinois, and Comcast of Illinois Ten or X LLC. Item B, consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty dash R dash one one eight, providing waivers for various liquor and business license fees for calendar year twenty twenty-one due to COVID-19 and the ongoing public health crisis. Item C, consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty dash R dash one one seven, approving an agreement with the Illinois Convenience and Safety Corp. for the village's bus shelter program. Item D, consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty dash R dash one one nine, authorizing a contract with Integrated Document Technologies for CAPSYS and OnBase System Upgrades Document Management. And lastly, item E, consider payments of outstanding bills in the amount of four million thirty-three thousand six hundred and forty dollars and four cents is listed on the vendor board approval report stated November twentieth and November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, clerk. Does any board member care to remove any of these items?
Yes, Mayor Vandenberg, this is Trustee Berg. I'd like to call item B for a separate vote.
And is the motion to move item B, is there a second for that?
I don't think we need a second.
You don't need a second, yep.
You don't need a second?
No.
Take the vote on the remaining items and then call B separately.
Fair enough. Is it properly moved and seconded for the consent of the NIs or removing item B for a separate item for a full vote? Is there any other board member to care to remove any of these? Nope, we'll call a roll on the first item, please.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
All right, very good. We'll move on. We'll have item B.
Somebody needs a motion and a second.
I need to be proud to have a motion and a second, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion for item number B or the letter B. I'll second that motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Very good. Any discussion on this? There's no discussion, please. Call roll.
Trustee Berg.
Abstain.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting ordinance twenty twenty dash O dash zero seven seven, granting a corner fence variation for a certain property located at eight three five zero Cloverview Drive.
Second.
Thank you.
The petitioners Orlando and Olivia, I just had it in my head too, Alvarez, are seeking a variation from the zoning ordinance to permit a six-foot-high privacy fence to extend to their required secondary front yard for their property. The Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on November twelfth, two thousand twenty, voted three to zero to recommend approval of the amended variation request in accordance with the plans and findings of facts as listed in the November twelfth, two thousand twenty staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Mueller, is there any discussion? Any comment from the public regarding this item? There is none. Please call roll.
Roll call for item number four, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item five, Mueller, thank you.
I move we consider adopting ordinance twenty twenty dash O dash zero seven eight, granting a special use for level-two open storage on property located at one seven two zero one Ridgeland Avenue. IBD Corp. is the petitioner.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And trustee Mueller.
The petitioner on behalf of IBD Corp. is seeking a special use permit to allow ELFI wall systems to store finished product in an area measuring two hundred feet by twenty-five feet on the south side of the building. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty, and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the special use with recommended conditions in accordance with the plans as listed in the listed reviews, plans, and findings of fact in the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Are there any, is there any discussion regarding this item? There is none. Please call roll.
Roll call for item five, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item six, trustee Mueller.
I move we consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty dash R dash one two two, approving a Cook County Class Eight reclassification for the property located at one seven two zero one Ridgeland Avenue and one seven four zero one Ridgeland Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Berg.
This resolution provides support for the Cook County Class Eight incentive, which reduces the tax assessment ratio for ten years. IBD Corp. will be leasing the property to ELFI, a related entity. This resolution includes a redevelopment agreement that addresses the improvements that must be completed. If these items are not met, the village can choose to revoke this reclassification. The Economic and Commercial Commission reviewed the application at their November ninth, two thousand twenty meeting, and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the Class Eight reclassification. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole held just prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption tonight.
Thank you, trustee Mueller. Any discussion, comments to the board? Any comments to the public regarding item six? Please call roll.
Roll call for item six, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item seven, trustee Brady.
Yes, like to have the board consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty R one two one, authorizing a geographic information system, GIS, consortium contact by the by and between the Village of Tinley Park and the Municipal GIS Partners Incorporated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The attached documents are updated executive board agreement and statement of work with the GIS Consortium service provider, Municipal GIS Partners, MGP. The village has the right to terminate the agreement upon ninety days' written notice to the service provider. The reduced cost during COVID-19 period will be a hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Funds for this expenditure were budgeted for not to exceed the amount of two hundred and eight thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars. This renewal term shall commence on January one, two thousand twenty-one, remain in effect until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. In addition, monthly usage reports are provided by the village board to confirm utilization of the GIS data by staff and the public. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, trustee Brady. Any board members care to comment? Please call a roll.
Roll call for item number seven, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item eight, trust.
I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting Resolution twenty twenty dash R dash one two three, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with Will County for the proposed improvements of Eightieth Avenue from south of one hundred and ninety-first Street to north of one hundred and eighty-third Street in the counties of Will and Cook.
I'll second it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
The current estimated costs for the shared improvements are seven point two eight four million, with the village responsible for all the costs over five point six million. After the improvements are completed, the county will transfer jurisdiction of Eightieth Avenue from Will County to the village. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole held prior to this meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments to the board? Any comments to the public regarding this item? Please call a roll.
Roll call for item number eight, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item eight, there are item nine, pardon me, trustee Glatz.
I'd like to make a motion to consider adopting ordinance two zero two zero dash O dash zero seven nine, approving acquisition of right-of-way for highway purposes for the improvement of Eightieth Avenue and appropriating funds, PIN numbers one nine dash oh nine dash one one dash two hundred dash zero one four dash zero 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 zero, and PIN number one nine dash oh nine dash one two dash one hundred dash zero one two dash zero 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 zero.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. The cost of the properties, including expenses, will not exceed sixty-five thousand. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Whole held prior to this meeting. This ordinance, Jake, is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion from the board? Any discussion or comments from the public? Please call a roll.
Roll call for item number nine, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item number ten, trustee Galante.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend item ten to reflect a two percent increase for the public, the police pension purposes, as discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting earlier tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, the, just the.
I need a vote?
Yeah, correct. You need a vote on the amendment.
I need a vote on the amendment, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So it's improperly moved and seconded to amend item ten. Is there any discussion required for that?
Pat, do you want me to read in what the exact amount is and what the percentage increase is into the record?
Sure, I thought, yeah.
Okay.
Please, yes, yes, Andrew, thank you.
Okay, so the amendment is to increase the levy as proposed from the prior year by five hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. That new levy amount that would be approved this evening, which is eligible for first read, is twenty-eight million one hundred and forty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars, and it reflects a two-point-zero-seven percent increase over the previous year's requested tax dollars.
Thank you, Andrew. We'll call a roll on the amendment, please.
Roll call on amendment, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
The amendment passes, thank you. Does item ten now require a vote as is, as amended?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Is the board accountable to move item ten?
Yes. I'm going to make a motion to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash zero dash zero seven one, levy and taxes for the corporate purposes for the Village of Tinley Park, two twenty twenty tax levy year.
Thank you, trustee Galante, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Berg. You could proceed.
Thank you.
If there's anything else that you need to add, trustee Galante.
Chef, go ahead and read this, I don't need to.
I don't think so because the numbers have changed and Andrew just read them. The motion.
Yeah, we'll just take the discussion that was had prior and add that into the record, that should be sufficient.
I would agree. Andrew, on first.
Many comments to the board?
I would like to add, just for the record, that this increase in our levy over the prior year is less than five percent and does not require a publication of the truth and taxation notice or a public hearing.
Thank you, Andrew.
So we can adopt this tonight?
It's eligible for first reading.
Just for first read, no matter what.
This is a first reading, so there would be no public comment on this, and this would be a roll call. Madam Court, please call a roll.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item eleven, trustee Galante.
Thank you. I'd like to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash zero dash zero seven two, abating a portion of the twenty twenty tax levy requirements as provided for in the bond order dated March third, twenty nine, two thousand nine, in connection with the issuance of ten thousand, ten million two hundred and thirty-five thousand general obligation refunding and improvement bond series two thousand nine of the Village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will County, Illinois.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, go ahead, Diane.
Thank you. The twenty twenty tax levy for this bond issue is established at one million one hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars, and the village is in the position to abate seven hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars of this levy from the following sources and amounts. From the Water and Sewer Revenue Fund, it'll be three hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and forty-four and twenty cents. The Tax Bonds Stabilization Fund is two hundred and eighty-three thousand one twenty-five and eighty cents. And from the Surplus Capital Project Fund, one hundred and four thousand and one hundred. The net levy of this bond issue will be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The abatement items were provided at the Committee of the Whole meeting held on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty. This ordinance is eligible for first reading.
Thank you, trustee Galante. Many comments to the board? Again, this is eligible for first reading this evening. We'll proceed with the roll call. Clerk, please call a roll.
Roll call for item eleven, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item twelve, trustee Galante.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash zero dash zero seven three, abating a portion of the twenty twenty tax levy requirements as provided for in the bond order dated August sixteenth, two thousand eleven, in connection with the issuance of five million nine hundred and forty thousand general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand eleven, the Village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will County's Illinois library.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Berg. Go ahead, trustee Galante.
Thank you. The twenty twenty tax levy for the bond issuance issue is established at six hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred dollars, and the village is in the position to abate a hundred and fifty thousand of this levy from the village's surplus capital project fund. The net levy will be five hundred and ten thousand eight hundred dollars for this bond issue. The debt service item appears as part of the levy in the Tinley Park Public Library. The abatement items were provided at the Committee of the Whole meeting held on November seventeenth. This ordinance is eligible for first reading.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion from the board? Madam Court, please call a roll.
Roll call for item number twelve, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item thirteen, trustee Galante.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash zero dash zero seventy-four, abating all of the two thousand twenty tax levy requirements as provided for in the bond order dated June fifth, two thousand thirteen, in connection with the issuance of eleven million three hundred and forty thousand general obligation bonds, series twenty thirteen of the Village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will County.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Judge Brennan. Go ahead, trustee Galante.
Thank you. The twenty twenty tax levy requirement for this bond issue is established at nine hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, and the village is in a position to abate the entire amount of this levy from the following sources. Hotel and motel fund on Oak Park Avenue, TIF, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand four sixty, surplus tax capital fund, four hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents, from the Water and Sewer Fund, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand eighty-five dollars and ninety-one cents, from the Stormwater Management Fund, seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirteen cents, and from the Main Streets South TIF, ten thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The abated, abatement items were provided at the Committee of the Whole meeting held on November seventeenth, and this ordinance is eligible for the first reading.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Madam Court, please call a roll.
Roll call for item thirteen, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item fourteen, trustee Galante.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash zero dash zero seven five, abating a portion of the tax year twenty twenty Village of Tinley Park property tax extended for eighteen five oh one Convention Center Drive, Tinley Park, Will County, Illinois. It's a development incentive agreement for the Tinley Park Hotel and Convention Center.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
In July of two thousand seventeen, the Village of Tinley Park entered into agreements with the elementary school district one fifty-nine, Rich Township High School District two twenty-seven, and the Harp Group, Inc., related to the hotel property located at one eight five oh one Convention Center Drive and attached to the village's Convention Center facility. The Harp Group purchased the hotel property and requested assistance with regard to the significant property tax bill for this location. Under these agreements, the three governments mentioned above will abate fifty percent of the respective government's property tax extended for the property for the period of ten years, or cumulative or collective four million in abatements, whichever comes first. The ordinance represents the third year of the abatement, and a copy of the ordinance will be filed with the Cook County Clerk. The two school districts will provide similar direction for their respective abatements and the Cook County Clerk. The abatement items were provided at the Committee of the Whole meeting held on November seventeenth, and this ordinance is eligible for first reading.
Thank you, trustee Galante. Any discussion from the board? Please call a roll.
Roll call for item fourteen, trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you. Item fifteen, trustee Galante.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to consider ordinance twenty twenty dash zero dash zero seventy-six, abating a portion of the Village of Tinley Park tax year twenty twenty property tax extended for eighty-four fifty-one, one hundred and eighty-third place, Tinley Park, Will County, Illinois, Surface Shield, Inc., in inducement agreement.
Motion, Court.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
In July of two thousand seventeen, the Village Board approved resolution twenty seventeen dash R dash zero thirty-nine, adopting an inducement agreement with the Surface Shield, Inc., to locate to the manufacturing, its manufacturing facility, the Tinley Park. Under this agreement, provided that the company met and exceeded certain benchmarks, the village would abate fifty percent of the property taxes extended for the Village of Tinley Park for a period of four years. The company has met the requirements of the, um, inducement agreement and is eligible for the tax abatement as provided under the agreement. Their ordinance represents the third year of the abatements. Under the inducement agreement, uh, the ordinance will direct Will County Clerk to abate fifty percent of the property taxes extended against this property. The abatement items were provided at the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty, and this ordinance is eligible for first reading.
Um, thank you. Any discussion from the board? Please hold a roll.
Roll call for item number fifteen, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item sixteen, received. Power from staff.
Mr. President, a couple things. First, just really wanted to thank, uh, the staff and finance for the, and I know it was aggregated, but really this mid-year budget, um, was a very glorious process. The staff has really done an excellent job at holding the line on expenses, and I think Andrew and Brad did a great job at, uh, putting together exactly what we, what we need and what we can afford. And just one of the items on the agenda tonight, kind of, we talked about it pretty quickly, but, uh, Pat Carr was able to negotiate a reduced, uh, fee for GIS agreement that saved us about fifty-seven thousand dollars. So, again, those are the types of things we, we need to do, obviously, in this leaner and leaner era. So, that's it.
Jeff, Pat. Jeff, Pat.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh, I would like to, uh, recognize Steve Clummer, uh, from the village. He's our senior computer technician. He has put in his retirement, uh, papers, so he will officially retire December eleventh. His last day will be December fourth. Uh, he's also, uh, my deputy with emergency management, so he was one of the first people I met fifteen years ago, and, uh, he will be missed, and, uh, we thank him for his service.
Anything else from staff? I know Forrest is on the line. Um, you wanna, Forrest, you wanna talk about the, today's, uh, fire event? Apparently not.
Or not.
There he is.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Uh, yes, just, just real briefly, the fire department responded to an apartment fire at eleven o'clock this morning in the sixty-five hundred block of one hundred and seventy-third place. Um, riding on the scene, we found a few occupants in the outside there. Uh, but, uh, thanks to the efforts of, uh, our crew, Land Truck Forty-Six, led by Lieutenant French and firefighter Christian Andrews, they were able to get to the second floor and make a window rescue and ground layers with the help of Forrest Engine Forty, and rescue two juveniles from the second floor bedroom. Uh, they were treated by the paramedics on the scene and released, uh, without transport to the hospital. Fire is still under investigation, and, uh, at this time, I believe the building is unattavable displacement of four families inside. So, um, thanks to Chief Dunn, who was first on the scene and commanded the operation. It was an excellent operation, and, you know, we're sorry for the loss of the apartments and the damage that was incurred, but, uh, two successful land rescues, uh, were undertaken by the crew, and, uh, we had a very suc- suc- successful outcome, and I wanted to commend the crews for their, uh, terrific work out there today. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for the opportunity. Uh, anything else from staff, too? If there's something else, move on to item seventeen, received. Comments on the board? Any board member carry a comment?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
No, ladies first.
Oh, thanks, Bill. I just wanna, uh, remind everybody the annual tree lighting is Friday, the fourth. Uh, residents can watch the annual tree lighting ceremony this year from the comfort of their own home on the village's Facebook page. Tune in at six P M. Friday, December fourth, to watch carolers, remarks from the mayor and the board, a virtual walkthrough of the holiday winter walk, and the lighting of the village's giant, beautiful holiday Christmas tree. Yay, six thirty. Thank you, everybody. We still having Christmas.
Well, since you took my speech, thank you very much. That's what I get for being a gentleman. But I'd like to add to that, certainly this, uh, problem we've had this whole year, uh, for the people to continue, and go around, check out the neighbors. You know, marketing has done a great job, and they have the elf in the window contest, and we're gonna be having, uh, houses that are going up for decorations, awards and that. So, uh, take, take hold of this, uh, decorations, uh, in our neighborhoods, and go around and drive around and take the kids around to see all these different people's homes that took in so much work, uh, to put up lights and decorations to, uh, make this a joyous year. So, do that as well as what Trustee Burke said.
May I have the floor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to discuss some of the recent statements made about information distribution amongst the board. Previously, it's been implied that information is more accessible to some elected officials than others. These statements are completely incorrect and very misleading to provide to the public. Most recently, the subject of the Volmer Homer purchase and the information provided was called into question. To set the record straight, on August eighteenth, four pages related to the Volmer Homer Hal- Harlem project were communicated. All elected officials were included in this communication. On September first, one page related to this project were communicated. All elected officials were included in this communication. And on September fifteenth, an email was sent with about seventy pages related to this project. All elected officials were included in this communication. To summarize, a total of about seventy-five pages of information were commuted, communicated that outlined the plan and made discussion points of this project. The main point in all these communications was how to take control of the land and protect our residents, especially those within Odyssey and the Brookside Glen subdivision. Without that control, the board and residents of Tinley Park sit by as spectators to this land use. As it relates to the Tribune article that was released on this matter, there are several key dates that I'd like to emphasize. On September twenty-first, an email from village manager Dave Nymeyer that only included the board directed that we would have a special meeting on the twenty-ninth. The morning of the twenty-third, Mr. Heidner emailed the village attorney that the property was no longer for sale. Later that day, the afternoon of the September twenty-third, the Tribune called Dave Nymeyer and asked about the special meeting subsequent week. The timelines in the article imply that the phone call later in the afternoon stopped Tinley Park from acquiring this property despite the property not being for sale any longer after that morning. I continue to worry that this inaccurate depiction of the events were published will only hurt our ability to negotiate to the benefit of the residents in these areas. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Uh, any other board members carry a comment this evening?
I do, Jake.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add something to what Mike just said. All of us discussed this already four different times. Uh, the board has discussed the appraisal. The broker has been present for these discussions to discuss the value of the land already. Bottom line, staff did an excellent job presenting us all the information necessary to make a decision. I want to thank Dave, Andrew, Brad, Kimberly, Pat, Hannah, everyone that was involved in putting that project together for us. We received stacks of information from the manager's office. We also had an opportunity to call Dave if we had questions or you didn't understand. October twenty-third, Dave notified the board. He has been in discussion with Mr. Heidner that he has received multiple offers now for the property over eleven million dollars. One offer was close to twelve million. So, somebody's malfeasance possibly cost the village to four million dollars of lost revenue that, uh, Andrew spoke of during the, uh, tax levy. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a statement also.
Hold on to the board here.
I want to make it clear. This information did not come from me. I will say I, I probably misspoke when I said I didn't have everything. Um, I was traveling out of, with my family that week. If something came out that week, I may not have known I had it. I, I was against moving forward with the village purchasing this property. So, my focus was probably not into the details of everything that was being sent out because I was a no vote, and I knew that I was a no vote. I wasn't, I wasn't interested in the village getting in the middle of this deal. I, I think it was, it was, the project wasn't my issue. The, the owner of the property wasn't the issue. The buyer wasn't the issue. It had nothing to do with it. I didn't want to put the risk on this village. I didn't think we should be in the middle of it. That was it. I don't, I would never have known how to reach out to a, a reporter to spill this information, and I did not do it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Any other comments on the board this evening? It appears there are any, so we'll continue with item eight, eighteen, pardon me, received comments in the public. Um, it's been requested by the deputy clerk that we handle the phone call, um, first. I believe there's one phone, phone.
There is. Hang on one second.
And perhaps the village council can update, um, the policies that have been implemented for this regarding public comment?
I'll get him on the line first, sir.
Um, sure, sure. Go ahead. We can wait for that.
Hello, sir. Um, you are now in the village board meeting. Um, if you want to hold on one minute, um, the village attorney is gonna make a comment.
Um, okay, so we are, um, as the board's aware and everyone's aware, we are, um, we did notice this meeting under the governor's disaster proclamations. Therefore, our temporary, um, procedures and rules are in place. Um, just to highlight a few things, um, in those written and published rules, uh, it does indicate that public comment should be presented in a manner as if the participant is in attendance at the meeting. Um, at the start of the call, participants should provide their name and any other information that they wish to convey. For comments regarding agenda items, if they could identify and I, excuse me, identify and include the agenda item number, that would be preferred as well. Participants should address all comments of the public body as a whole and not to any member thereof. Repetitive comments are discouraged. The total comment time for any participant is three minutes. Further time, up to an additional three minutes, may be granted upon motion. Uh, and a participant may not give his or her allotted time to another participant to increase the person's allotted time. So, I just wanted to review those, um, since we are still under the governor's order, and that's how we notice a meeting. So, with that, Mr. Eberhart, floor's yours.
Counselor, be, counselor, before you continue, can you confirm what you mean by the, uh, by the motion regarding the additional three minutes? Is that a motion moved by a board member, followed by a second and a full vote?
Correct. Similar, similar to our normal policy where if a participant asks for more time, it has to be done by motion of the board.
So, it, my point is that it's stipulated by the chair.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, if we could, uh, queue up the clock and then, when it's ready to go, Mr. Eberhart, you could continue.
Before starting the clock, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
That's not how it works.
This is not how, this isn't, Mr. Eberhart, it's not question and answer. You have three minutes. Um, we need to move on.
I'm asking for the additional three minutes, and I pointed out that the section of the ordinance provides that as the chair's decision and not by vote of the board. Uh, we have not had a regular meeting since the governor's-
I will, Mr. Eberhart, Mr. Eberhart, Mr. Eberhart, I can answer you on that. The ordinance you're reading, we're not proceeding under. We are under the governor's disaster declaration. We have other written rules published that, uh, provide, uh, provide the procedure for those. That is to be made by motion at the board. The, the ordinance you're reading, I'm guessing, is not, uh, what we're going under. So, if you wish to ask for that motion now, uh, the board can entertain it.
I wish to ask for the additional three minutes over my objection of your not following proper rules.
Understood. So, there's a, there's a request for a motion for an additional three minutes? Is there a motion by the board? Second call. Is there a motion for the board to recor- to grant the additional three minutes? Hearing none. Uh, Mr. Eberhart, you have three minutes.
And I again object to the identification and the demanding of a name, which is improper.
Okay.
October first was a bad day for corrupt politicians from Tinley Park. September thirtieth wasn't any better. It's no coincidence that since September first, every board meeting has been either canceled or rescheduled to a special meeting until tonight. On October first, the Tribune published the article about a one-point-five billion dollar win for free taxpayer money. The trustee Glatz and his political operatives on the board were going to gift with developers. The day before, on September thirtieth, Glatz received a letter from the attorney general reminding him, Glatz, quote, "You may not silence comment" based on the chairperson's disagreement with the speaker's viewpoint," unquote. This was in response to a request for review while Alfred Glatz refused to read another email called the comment. In his usual name calling, he referred to tell, to fellow trustees as the Babsy Twins on social media because they disagreed with him. As I said before, he has neither the integrity nor the maturity to be sitting on bad dimes. He was directed by the attorney general. Does not do so, or has not done so, the board should establish and report rules properly on the O M A. He and Mr. O'Brady have continued ignoring those directions. Glatz's position with regard to Mr. O'Brady is itself interesting. Shortly after the party bus incident, Glatz referred to O'Brady on social media as part Portland, part platform. Now he's another of Glatz's trustee confidants, with O'Brady going so far as to try to intercede on behalf of Glatz's relative to get that relative a job with the Illinois State Police after that application was rejected. Glatz will continue to authorize, and is already authorized, spending tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars to protect his corruption. Trustees Mueller, Brennan, and Brady are hypocritical when they talk about sharing duties. Mueller is the producer of many of the hate and attack videos that got most popular on social media.
Call it. Call it. Can you pause the time?
Yeah, can we stop it?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, this is-
Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, we've got a point of order. Mr. Mayor, you've got a request for a point of order. This is just-
If we could pause the clock?
We did.
Mr. Eberhart, if you could hold your comment for a moment. Uh, there's a point of order brought to the table.
This is just slander. There, does he have any proof of these statements?
I guess, yeah. Mayor, as the chair, you have the right to enforce order and decorum, um, and the, uh, the normal flow of business here during publ- during public comment. Um, I, if we're gonna get into slander and things like that, I think you're talking here outside the rules of order and decorum. I, I think you're-
Hate video?
Perhaps.
I haven't created a single hate video.
Right. So, I think that, I think that's, I think it's a point of order on orman, on order and decorum.
I, I understand, I understand. Trustee Mueller, your point of order is recognized. Uh, Mr. Eberhart, uh, I will allow you to finish your comments. However, I will point you to the direction of keeping it, uh, regarding village business and not any personal attacks, uh, specifically slanderous, uh, without evidence, um, and any specific attacks against individuals.
So, uh, deputy, deputy- Board members are always open for public comment. What was it that Glatz refused to have read into the record on September fifteenth? Agenda item twenty-two, that the Babsy Twin won AM red. I apologize, ladies, that's not my terms, that's-
We're used to it.
Pay to play is alive and well at Tinley Park thanks to trustee Michael Glatz. In two thousand eighteen, Rory Group LLC contributed five thousand dollars to principal-
Still addressing by name.
June fourth, two thousand nineteen, on motion of Glatz, Rory Group was appointed for lobbying services. Try and sum up, because I can't see the clock. At a time when Rory Group was renegotiating their contract, Mr. Mannion dropped a thousand dollars to Glatz. Lucy Anderson from Rory Group dropped another thousand.
That's a time, correct?
Time is up.
That's time. Mayor, the time's up.
Then I, you may have to go over, go ahead and cease the call, please. Thank you. Ball call ended.
Awesome.
Thank you. So, do any other public comments this evening?
Yes.
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 Am I allowed to take this thing off my face?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Vandenberg, it's Rick Heidner. Um, I would like to request the extra three minutes if that's possible.
Uh, board, as we just did, there's a request for an extra three minutes. Um, in order to grant that, it has to be motion second and approved by, uh, majority of the board. Is there a motion?
Second.
I'll second.
There's a motion, uh, properly moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion?
No, but call roll, please.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Um, a no, but just out of fairness to the previous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Mueller. Uh, the motion will carry, uh, Mr. Heidner. Uh, welcome and good evening, and, uh, the floor is yours. Your time has been extended.
Thank you very much. I very much appreciate it, and I'd like to thank trustee Mueller for his comments. I didn't know that you were even gonna mention the Harlem Volmer property, but I really do appreciate it. It gave me a little, uh, extra, you know, subject of it. So, anyway, I want to tell everyone that, uh, from the first day that I started with Tinley Park on the original project with the mental health facility, I can't tell you how much I felt embraced by the community and by the, by the board and, and by the mayor. So, I just want to tell you how important that has always been to me and how appreciative I, I am of it. Unfortunately, obviously, you know, I continually get beaten up everywhere where it's possible, especially by the Tribune and, and by this David Heidsmann. For some reason, I become his pet. So, um, it's very important to me because it's been a little bit hurtful of what had happened, okay? The property that I bought, the hundred and fourteen acres on Harlem and Volmer, you know, I had bought as a secondary spot for the, for the, uh, racetrack. You know, after some time and, and consideration, you know, it just wasn't the right spot for the racetrack. So, I decided to go ahead and, and see if there was other options with it. There was some discussion, I think, even at that time of maybe Tinley Park or not Tinley Park, and it didn't seem to be a big issue. When all the development was happening, everybody has to understand that the property became tremendously more valuable with Amazon going across the street. So, um, you know, I want everyone to understand that, that the intentions that I have put forward from the very first day to today, including today, has always been in consideration of Tinley Park, too, and what's important to you. So, just as a little timeline, so you understand, you know, I had a six million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar offer, two separate parcels of twenty-seven acres, three million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand each, which is six million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and still having sixty acres left, less than half, okay? Um, it was going into Mattson. The deal was very much made through the developer with Mattson. Um, and then I, I definitely reached out to see if, making sure that Tinley Park was okay with it. It seemed okay in the beginning, and then all of a sudden began a huge issue, which was hurtful to Tinley Park. At that time, I said, you know what? I don't want to hurt Tinley Park, but I don't want to be hurt either. The people did not want to come into Tinley Park. They had an alliance with Mattson. They had an alliance with, with Amazon. So, it was proposed, okay, if I sell the property to Tinley Park. It was also proposing to me that there's no way that, that, because it's as much as twelve million dollars for the property, and there was no way that Tinley Park could afford that, it justified that they could ever spend it. So, I, I, it was my suggestion, I believe, to say, you know, if you want, just give me, you know, seven and a half million dollars, it's okay. So, uh, that being said, um, we were going through some processes and things. It was all very private and closed session. Whoever did this to me with the, with the Tribune, and I didn't turn around to see if Mr. Heidsmann's here or not, um, you know, that was incredibly damaging. Um, and, and really uncalled for. If anybody had time to read it, I actually read it while I was sitting here, unfortunately, which really upset me, um, with just false information and dis- disinformation. So, it, it was incredibly harmful. So, I pulled the property when I heard that this is becoming, you know, a political problem, and I, and I didn't want to be in the newspaper. So, I- So I did pull the property and say, I didn't want to sell it anymore because I didn't want to get in the midst of whatever kind of fights that happen in political arenas I have no interest in. So, so unfortunately, that didn't stop anyone, it didn't stop anything. So I do want to let you know that from that day forward, I have worked with David and I have been absolutely insistent with anyone that wants to work with this property that it has to go in Tinley Park. It's important to Tinley, it's important to Rick Heidner, okay? And I don't want that to change. But I need everyone to understand, no one can use me as a pawn here. I have a wife, I have a family, I have a business. I have a reputation of, you know, 45 years of work, you know, 60 years on this earth. So I really appreciate if, if that wouldn't happen. And I also do want to tell you, I took the lesser offer because they didn't require a TIF and because it just seemed like it was going to be better for the town, okay? So I do have it under contract, but I do want to let you know whoever did this, you know, I have several offers, okay? I have an $11,750,000 offer that I turned down. That's a windfall of $4,250,000 that the town would have gotten. I was happy to take the $7.5 million. This, and by the way, the $7.5 million was going to be spread out over two years, one month, and 15 days, okay? You know, I appreciate that you guys stood by me when all this negative things, by the way, I didn't do anything, I'm winning everything, whatever. Unfortunately, that's a problem too, because the more you win, the more they try to hurt you. So I took the lesser amount. I think it's a better project for you guys. I had an $8.5 million offer, I had your $7.5 million offer, I had the $6,350,000 for less than half of it. And, and I, and I took, this is signed and they're working with your, your staff and everything now. But I just, I just, you know, it's, it's, I just want everybody to understand how hurtful it was. And, and you really only cost yourself money. I'll continue to do everything I said and I've never lied to you guys, I've always been honest with you. And I just, I just really would appreciate, I can't be involved in the middle of, of whatever problems you guys are having, if, if you don't mind. I hope that's understandable and I hope I made sense.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heidner.
Thank you, Mayor Vandenberg.
Are there any other comments this evening?
There's one coming up to the.
Good evening. I too would like to ask if we could extend it three minutes, please. May not take all that, but.
We have the request for three minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Same reason, though.
And just, just want to touch on this briefly. After listening to Mr. Heidner and what both trustee Mueller and trustee Glatz had said. So over a period of time, you were giving approximately 75 pages of information on the property, on the sale. I'm going to assume it was detailed?
Very.
Okay. So trustee Galante, how can you say that you only received one piece of paper? A few months ago, you sat up there and held up a piece of paper and said, I've only gotten one piece of paper.
We didn't have detailed information of his sale, of his, what he was doing.
But what they have stated is that you.
Did you guys get a detailed report of what he was buying? His, his, did you get that?
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the 75 pages that they both referenced. There you go, whatever he's holding up there, I suppose.
So what is it you're asking, I'm sorry?
So you stood up here about two months ago and stayed, held, or six weeks ago and held up one piece of paper.
Okay, so the day I came in here, absolutely, let me, let me clarify that. When we sat in here for the executive session, we did not get 75 pages.
Well, it couldn't have been executive session, and I witnessed that because I was here at a meeting.
No, but what I was saying was, when this was presented to us, when we were asked to vote on it, to move forward with it, I was given one piece of paper. Hannah, you can, it was, it was, I believe you put it here, it was a picture of the, the properties, yellow highlighted, A, B, C, D was said on it. I didn't, wasn't even sure what it was. And I had to ask, what is this? And they said, oh, we're only talking about two of these properties. That's what I was given that night, that I had to give my vote.
So can I ask the other board members, previous to that, had you been given pages and documentation concerning the property?
Just for one second, you guys, you don't have to answer any questions. This is, public comment is not queuing, but you can, I can't stop.
All the stuff we mentioned, we received in our executive session packets.
Okay. So my, my next point is, just a few minutes ago, trustee Galante, you stated that you may have received some of it when you were on vacation and you didn't read it because you knew you were going to vote no. Don't you think that's pretty short-sighted that possibly that information contained in those other 75 pages? Can you let me finish, please?
Yes, sure, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sure.
Don't you think that information in that packet that you were given might have changed your mind had you bothered to read it?
No, I don't. I had all the.
So you don't believe, so you don't believe that you should.
Nancy, let me finish.
Read all of the information that you're given and you can make.
You don't even have to talk to her.
I just want to make it clear to the public that I read everything. I do my due diligence on every single thing.
Well, obviously you don't because you stated you didn't read the 75 pages.
I did. I did. If, 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 would you, can, would you like to review the, the 75 pages?
No, it's none of my business.
The information for me was that the village, I did not want the village at risk. I didn't want to put the taxpayers at risk. I was great if you wanted to sell that to somebody else, or if he wanted to do something. I didn't want to put the, the village at risk.
Okay, you just contradicted yourself. You said that you did not read the packet with 70, or 74 pages.
I did not say that, I did not say that.
Okay, well, I'll go back and, and listen to the meeting.
Nancy, I'm not sure, can you explain, what are you, what's your point, what are you trying to get to?
My point is, you just stated previously that you didn't read it because you knew you were going to vote no. That is malfeasance. You are voting no without having all of the information.
I had all the information presented to me. I had, they were negotiating changes.
But you stated that you only had one piece of paper.
It was changes. When I sat in here that night, that's what I had. And I wasn't even sure of all the information.
I'm moving on, I'm moving on. Dave, could I ask you, have you gotten any further information? I know we just started to talk about it a few minutes ago from the Tinley Park Mental Health Center. Have you heard anything from MWRD or anybody?
Just again, you don't.
No, I know, but he, we've actually communicated on this outside of.
I don't have a public comment.
That I passed the information, what I have, to him. Okay, no. About, I think, four, maybe five, six weeks ago, I had brought up how concerned I was about the safety of the Tinley Park Mental Health Center. And its security is extremely lax, you know, there's no fence, anybody can walk on it. There's issues, you know, we have people going onto the property causing further damage, you know, criminal damage, being arrested for it. And I think, I think we need to do something. I had mentioned that, you know, it's worked in Chicago to put their names and pictures in the newspaper and I really think that might, I, I wish the board would take that up. It's, it's, you know, it's been said to me by these experts, you know, environmental engineers. It's not if something will happen, it's going to be when. And I think we need to be proactive. I think we need to do something and I think that would work as a deterrent and hopefully stop people from breaking onto the property. I, I just think it's especially again because it's getting cold. I always had the fear of, you know, kids going into the buildings and starting a fire. It, it just, there's a lot of issues there. And I just, I, I would hope the board will take it seriously and possibly discuss it and take it up to try to do something, to, to come up with a plan to deter anyone else from going onto the property causing further damage. Thanks.
Other public comments?
One more.
Mayor Vandenberg, this is Mr. Stuckley. Trustee Galante, I was at Menards on Friday. Had some Christmas decorations. I was walking to the cast register and you and your son basically ambushed me. I heard my name, Mr. Stuckley, I turned around.
Mr. Stuckley, comments are supposed to be to the entire board.
Pardon me?
Comments are to the entire board and if you're going to ask a question, again, any trustee, you do not have to answer questions.
Oh, I totally, totally understand, Bob, totally understand. So you called me a liar. Your son called me a loser and I said, I'm, I'm not a liar. What I cite is from FOIA's, you called me a liar again. And I said, can I ask you a question? You don't have to answer. I said, according to an email through a FOIA, somebody on the board may have committed a criminal offense. So I said, who on the board committed a criminal offense? You won't answer me. I said, well then, why don't you go to the state's attorney? Have you gone to the state's attorney and filed a report? You said, nah, I don't think he answered me. And I think you might have said, I, I may, I might, or I'm looking into it.
Mayor, we have a point of order. Trustee Galante's raised a point of order. I'm assuming it's because the comments are being.
Pat, can you speak up?
Trustee Galante's raised a point of order. I'm assuming that's because the comments are being directed to her specifically.
Yes, it's specifically that he's speaking against my son, who has no idea.
Who called me a loser.
Who has no idea, what he said after listening to the conversation was that anybody that goes on Facebook to deliberately hurt people is a loser, is what he said. He has no idea who you are. We were both working, walking, the truth is, we both were walking.
That's hilarious, that's hilarious. He has no idea who I am.
None knows who you are.
Let's handle, let's handle the point of order.
If I can have order, please.
Let's handle the point of order.
So, so anyway.
Hold on, Mr. Stuckley, point of order's been raised.
Return back to what Counselor Crandall has stated before public comment this evening. All comments can be made directly to the village board, not to singular, single, uh, people. There's not going to be any question and answer moving forward. If you'd like to make a comment, Mr. Stuckley, please direct to me, Chair.
Okay, so has anybody on the village board committed a criminal act? I don't think you have. Has anybody contacted the state's attorney on a criminal board? I don't think you have, thank you.
Thank you.
What, did you hear that? She just called me a loser, so there she is again.
Mr. Stuckley, Mr. Stuckley, we're moving on.
Ignorance.
Mr. Stuckley, please.
My apologies. But I didn't call her ignorant.
Mr. Stuckley, your comments are over. Mayor, we're moving on, I think that's it.
Are there any other comments this evening? Anyone?
I think that's it.
Any other comments?
No.
Well, thank you, we'll move on to item 19, please. Call a court.
I'd like the board to consider approval of a request by the following village board members to attend the executive session by remote electronic means. Trustee Cindy Burke has chosen to attend in person, so this would pertain only to President Jacob Vandenberg. Consider approval of electronic attendance of the above-mentioned village board members to attend the executive session remotely.
Is there a motion?
Is there?
Oh, sorry.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call a roll.
We'll call for item 19, trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
No.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
No.
Trustee Mueller.
No.
Oh my God.
What has happened now, is that a deciding vote?
You are the deciding vote.
You are the deciding vote.
Uh, yes. Item 19 will carry, thank you.
Glad he doesn't have COVID. That's the reason I said no.
I'm adding as to a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the following items. May collect and negotiate matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Be the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony and a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine validity. The discussions of minutes of meetings will fully close under this act whether for the purposes or of approval by the body of minutes or semi-annual review of minutes as mandated by section 2.06.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
They're probably moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call for item 20, trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Galante.
Yes.
Trustee Glatz.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller.
Yes.
Will carry, will adjourn to executive session and there shall be nothing for the opening session following, thank you.